To the place.
What do you?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberated and judged as it should be.
All right. Yeah, so yeah, we have a special town meeting. So before the board is called to order, we're gonna let Becky Town Clerk take over here. So, oh, sorry, too much pressure.
I call this special town meeting. First order of business is a to nominate the moderator. I can have a nomination.
I will make a motion to nominate Lorraine Faraday.
Second.
Surprise twist.
Pass a vote for Lorraine.
Oh.
Nope.
There you are.
Oh, whoops, wrong one.
Your secret ballot.
Oh, it's secret.
Yeah, secret. Don't let anyone see it.
You never know.
Nah, you don't want me.
The surprise upset, she gets ousted and then.
Thank you. I have three votes for Lorraine Faraday.
Oh, my brother.
Oh, I thought you were two of us.
Okay. I, Lorraine Faraday, just swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state so long as I shall continue a citizen thereof. So help me God. I do swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities the duties incumbent on me as moderator of this special town meeting. According to the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of Maine and the Charter and ordinances of Damascata. So help me God.
Oh, I don't have one.
Neither.
Oh.
Yeah.
Got it?
Yep. Town manager always preferred.
Props.
Thank you, ma'am. At the floor. Putting the microphone over here at Mr. Anderson's chair.
Absolutely.
Think they can tell the difference? All right, Article two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate seven hundred and forty nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and seventy five, excuse me, from estimated revenues to be applied to reduce the fiscal year twenty twenty five tax commitment. Sales reemb- state reimbursements in this article do not reflect the reimbursement programs that are included in the tax rate calculation form that is completed by the assessors. The reimbursements that on that forum include B E T E, homestead and state revenue sharing. Both the Budget Committee and the Select Board have recommended seven hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and seventy five dollars. Do I hear a motion to accept? All right, second. A second. It's been moved in second and this is just, this is for the viewing public, this is nothing new. This is the one article that had some typos in it back at the regular town meeting in June and so had to be resubmitted. Any other dis- any discussion of this? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, hold up your orange cards. Opposed? Motion carries. Let's thus end of the special meeting.
Nice.
Call for adjournment.
Hmm?
All motion carrying.
Calling for adjournment, emotion?
Motion.
Motion, Dick, you want to adjourn this meeting?
We adjourn.
Thank you. Second, all those in favor? All right, everyone's.
Awesome.
You're on.
Lorraine?
You're in.
There. Yeah, they'll take those back. Yep. All right. Now, the way with that, I will call the Damascata Select Board Meeting Wednesday, July tenth to order. Oh, great. And that's a little special town meeting. I'd like to thank the folks who are at the town meeting before that pointed out the errors in the, in the, in the warrants. I went through several hands and us included. So, and it was, it was missed. So, thank you all. All right, well, we can get right, right into it. We are absent Tom Anderson tonight, but Josh has joined us from his baseball ventures. So, good to see you.
Flying trip back from Belfast, but I would obey this speed limit.
Does it be scheduled for today? Last night got rained out?
Yeah, we got most of the game in last night in the thunder shower and then we had to go back. We had to go back for about fifteen minutes today all the way to Belfast to finish it.
They keep winning. They keep winning. So, congratulations.
Advance the championship series. So, God.
Series.
So, we have to, we haven't been beaten yet. So, whoever beats us has to beat us twice and we only have to win one game.
Sweet. Cool. All right. Well, let's get some housekeeping out of the way here, folks. We have the minutes of June twenty six. Anybody had a chance to look those over? Are there any additions, amendments?
I guess the only thing I, I saw was it wasn't softball for me. It was baseball.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Yep, all right. All right.
We have to just modify the executive session minutes there, says the motion to enter executive session by Fraser and Anderson. And then there was a motion to adjourn by Fraser, second by Kuskarian, vote five zero. And then the motion to adjourn the regular meeting by Pinkham, second by Hunter and five, five zero zero.
Oh, okay. So I have that in. Yep. Right. So we hear a motion to set the meetings with the amendments.
Yeah, so.
Make that. All right, Dan's gonna make that motion then with the amendments. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Andrea, seconds? Any more discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, I did get ahead of myself. I apologize if it's okay with the board. We do have in your packet. It wasn't on the, it's not on the agenda, but there is a catering application.
Yeah.
Been here a little ways past a minute. Yeah.
Too far in.
Not too far in, but if it's okay with the board, we add that to official action items number two.
It's good with me.
Everybody? Okay. All right. Well, moving on. So we have some payroll stuff. We've got to take care of payroll warrants and accounts payable. Payroll warrant number one.
I'll move payroll warrant number one.
Thank you, Josh. You have a second? Andrea, your second?
Sure.
All righty. And any discussion on that one? All those in favor? All right. And then we do have tonight, we have actually three accounts payable warrants. So sixty three and sixty four are finishing up for F Y twenty four, Andy. Is that correct? It's the last one.
That's correct. Yeah.
And then number two is F Y twenty five. So I'm assuming we can move sixty three and sixty four together and then do two. Makes sense?
Whatever works.
We can do them all, I suppose, but.
I'll move accounts payable warrant sixty three and sixty four.
All right. Well, second, any discussion? All those in favor? All right. And I'll move accounts payable number two then.
Happen number one.
There's a number one also here.
That's the, that's.
Payroll number one. And then the accounts payable two, right? Did I get it wrong?
No, you got it right.
There's a.
Yeah.
H P sixty three and then there's a.
Yeah, those are sixty three, sixty four. And then it starts with.
I only see a sixty three.
I saw a two.
I see one and two.
Should that be a one, Andy? Did I get that wrong?
Looks like two on it.
Uh, that's a two. The payroll warrant one.
Number one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was one and two.
Yeah, it's all, it's all right in there. So, okay. So I think I just moved. I have a second on payroll. Sorry, accounts payable number two?
Yes, but.
Andrea, seconds? All right. Any discussion on that? Those in favor? Okay, so moved. All right. Yeah, moving right along. Under citizen comments and general correspondence, I think we have some, some talk about the traffic and parking ordinance, Andy? There's a discussion back and forth on that right now.
Yeah, just sharing some emails. There's been other conversations, phone calls and
Sure.
meeting folks on downtown at times. Chief's here to just provide any other, if anyone has any questions. The enforcement's not new. We do it every year. Some of it's seasonal. Some of it's supposed to be year round. Some of the feedback we've gotten this year, I think it's just important to share as we know the ordinance needs to be reviewed again and updated. But it's been interesting, I wasn't here the last time it was done, but to understand how and why we have time limits in there is to encourage turnover for the businesses. Some of the feedback we're getting right now is about, well, where do the employees park? And so
Right.
And understand and think about it before we get into is balancing those two needs. And with limited parking options, we mean we're not able to expand it right now. So, but just kind of sharing those with you as they've come in to get us thinking about yeah, what to do, like how to amend it going forward.
Current ordinance, it was what, twenty fifteen, right? That was the last, last update, updated and accepted. So, yeah.
So. Could you give us just an update in terms of the flavor of the conversations with the business owners and if you've been able to locate or any additional parking spaces?
Um, so separate from the ordinance conversation.
Right, because I, because I think the, the reason the ordinance conversation feels so poignant is, is it's because of, I think it's just top of mind for a lot of folks right now.
Sure.
It's my sense anyway.
Sure. So there, I mean, right now it looks like there's about forty five more spots. No, sorry. Seventy five more spots that during that two month period that we'll likely be able to utilize for some of it will be a combination of public, some of it might be just kind of permitted through store, business owners and tenant, for the tenants and employees, depending on the lot, but.
And how many?
Pretty lost in particular.
Part of the parking lot. Seventy five seems like that might replace a good.
During construction?
Yeah.
I think when they're doing the tank, I mean, we're estimating about a hundred spots.
Okay.
So, hundred and twenty or so, somewhere in a hundred, hundred and twenty spots during the first phase of that effort.
Okay, so you found seventy five to, to replace them.
I think so. I mean, I'm not, I'm not giving you a hard number, but that's ballpark about what it looks like at the moment.
And in, in process.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of it, yeah, just depend on how we're able to stripe it. And, you know, some are already striped and it is what it is, but.
So, do you, Chief, you want to speak a little bit to the?
Parking?
No, he doesn't want to.
My, my Achilles heel sometimes. No. So, obviously I've been here for going on fourteen years now. So I have a basic understanding of why this originated and some of the, some of the changes that came about. But to the best of my knowledge, and I think Josh may be the only one on the board, yes, that was here during the original, but every, every ounce of the downtown municipal law and on-street parking, the reason why we went over to the, to the timed parking was simply because business owners were having a hard time with turnover. And I can remember a time when we gave out parking passes for employees, for businesses and employees. And I'm going to tell you what happened. And the reason why they went away is because not everybody is honest, unfortunately. And they were taking and they were photocopying them and every single car in the parking lot had an employee parking pass. And it defeated the purpose.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Steve, why those, why do the shop owners want their employees in that parking lot? They should be someplace else. So their clients can park there.
But, but again, and, and I understand totally what you're saying. And, and I think as an employer and a tenant, we're all part of the problem, right? Because we have, we have this strong need and desire to come in and shop in our community and we want that to happen. But I, I think that if you looked at just tenants alone down there, you could fill our public parking. Right? If two people housed every single apartment that was down there, two people, let's just say they don't have a family with kids that drive. I think we could fill those parking spots up with tenants. Now, I'm not speaking of whether the town should give or not give tenants free parking, but I'm saying to you that a lot of other big cities with and towns that have parking issues don't offer free parking for them year round. It just doesn't happen. So, and then we start talking about business owners. I think there's what, sixty something businesses in the downtown region? If you look at every nook and cranny and every business. If only that, if every one of those sixty whatever businesses only had one employee, we can take up almost half of our parking spots. That's with only one employee. Not to say that, you know, we've got restaurants that have a half a dozen employees. Again, not, not to take away from this, but just trying to figure out. I personally would love to know from the board and sit down and have a conversation to talk about, why do we do it? And if the reason why we are enforcing parking is for the turnover, so the businesses have a survival, so there are places for patrons to park. Then I think the, I think that the ordinance is, is just, and I think we need to enforce all of the, the parking limits. And just so you all know, there was a lot of frustration about three hour parking this year. So we've been four years without three hour, the park, the three hour parking has been in this, in this ordinance since two thousand fifteen. Just, just as COVID was hitting, there was a lawsuit against, and I don't know if it was Minnesota, it doesn't matter where it was, somewhere got sued for chalk being on somebody's tire. And that went all the way up through the Seventh Court of Appeals. And eventually it was, it was after about two years, two and a half years, it was found that it was a Fourth Amendment violation of your constitutional rights to have your tire chalked. So it started, the process started, the lawsuit started, and of course, there was an appeals process. So every department that used the chalk didn't chalk anymore.
Stopped.
It's near impossible. Not, it's not impossible, but it's near impossible realistically to enforce these violations without being able to chalk the tire. We can chalk the ground. There's a lot of things we can do. So we didn't do it for about a year and then COVID hit. And we didn't do parking enforcement for two years with COVID. We simply couldn't. So, and then last year we didn't do it because of the trying to figure out how do we do this conceptually and make it work and be realistic. For a three hour parking violation, we can only do it twice in an eight hour day. If you think about it, right? And then in order to do it appropriately, we have to take a picture. We have to chalk the ground. Take a picture of the valve stem on the chalked area and another picture of the license plate of the car that's there. So every single car we take a photo of, we're taking three pictures. And then we've got to go back in three hours and try to scroll through what could be five or six hundred photos because somebody leaves. Parking enforcement officer's walking by, they take another photo, there's a new car. So my point being is that when, when we went to the, when they had the business meeting here this year, talking about the fear of losing the parking lot. There were several business owners in this meeting that's, that asked me specifically, what are we going to do about the three hour parking and asked to enforce the three hour parking? I said, I'll give it my best. So I had my parking enforcement, I trained them on how to do it. It's a giant pain in the butt. But we started to do it. And then somehow during this whole thing, people got really angry at me because now it looked like we were being quote unquote spiteful enforcing the three hour parking. That's not why we were doing it. We were enforcing something that was already there.
It's already there.
We simply hadn't been enforcing for real reasons. But we tried. And I'm going to be honest, it is very cumbersome. So in order for that, in order for that parking enforcement officer to do it, we might write a half a dozen three hour parking violations out of a hundred and seventy five spots because it's just not that easy to do. And there's so many photos or so many pictures, there's so much upkeep.
And there's, there's equipment.
Yeah, eighty five hundred dollars.
Yeah, so eight grand, ten grand maybe.
Not happening this year. There's a training aspect that comes with that. And there's still, it's software. There's software upgrades every year. So it's the eighty five hundred dollars is year one. But every year you're going to be paying for software upgrades, just like all of our other computer stuff. So again, I say this because I'm, I am a hundred percent aware of the needs of the downtown. I've been here a long time. I may not pay taxes here, but I deal with them every single day, both good and bad.
I said, you've obviously thought about this a lot.
Oh, a lot.
Yeah, so just, have you, if you took off your police chief hat for a moment, have you thought about potential solutions that you, you think would work?
So. No, and I'm going to tell you why. Because I need to know, what, what are we doing? Why are we enforcing it? Are we enforcing it for turnover for the businesses? If you can, if somebody can tell me and I know why we did it, but there's obviously a lot of people now that are upset. There's a lot of people this year that have come forward and said you haven't enforced the three hour parking. I'm a tenant, my landlord said I can park anywhere I want in town. Just a magnitude of things that have now, I can, I've done parking my entire career here, and this is by far the worst year that I have been screamed at, yelled at, called names, ridiculed, and basically just it, it's like, for what? What are we doing this for? If the business owners are screaming at me and it's designed for the business owners, I think we should get a conversation going with the business owners as a majority and say if you don't want parking enforcement downtown and you want a melee and anybody can park wherever, so be it. But just understand that the reason why we do it is if all the tenants and business employees park there, there will be nowhere for people to park to shop in your store.
And, and that was the, the original spirit of that, enforcing that time. It was, was exactly that for turnover.
Right.
You know, we're, I'm, you know, I, I, as a board member, I'll stick my hat around. I run a business downtown. I have seven to eight employee vehicles down there. I need to get those out of town. And, and because we take up, you know, I try to put in my law, but we end up using the public parking lot. And, and that's, that's seven to eight of my own employees sitting there taking up those spots. Clients can't get in. You know, it's, it's so, you know, as a, representing a business down there as well, we're our own, we're our own worst enemy. Because we, you know, I, I, we, we, we need to find a solution to, to, to get employees out, I think, going into the fall with the parking lot project. I'm hoping that there'll be some long-term solutions that'll come out of it, you know, with this, getting this forced upon everybody, going to really look at it. I was going to ask you two, have you, you, you put a survey out? How, what are you getting back for that right now? Do we have?
Got twenty three responses so far of the, out of seventy plus on the list.
So what is that? I mean, do you have a rough count of, of, of car count right now on that? Maybe just out of those twenty three?
This is just for employees, right?
It's business needs. Yeah, yeah, okay. Kind of property. Yeah, a little bit of.
Property and business owners.
Yeah. And just trying to get an idea of like who's actually parking down there during the day. You know, how many, how many employees, how many vehicles? Because I, I think it'll surprise us all to.
Well, I think while he's looking that up, I think it's important without naming any names of any letters in there. But it's interesting to hear from some of them in there talking about how their employees need to have somewhere to park. Now, there are people in there that own enough spots in their area where their employees could park, but they don't do that because they need the turnover. So their customers can get there to come in and out, right? And again, nothing against them, but they, they put in words, our problem everywhere. So they talk about they don't want, maybe they don't want the, a parking requirement on Elm Street, let's just say. The, the two hour parking, but that's part of downtown and people park there. So you don't want your employees to take up all your spots in your building, which I completely understand because you want customer turnover. But the same token is, we don't want to enforce, we would like you to not enforce the, the two or three hour parking because we need our employees to have somewhere to go because they work an eight hour day. But unfortunately, that's taking away from where the patrons are going to park to come in and shop in your business as well, right? It's not an easy, this is not an easy solution.
No.
Forty story parking garage, three thousand spots, pay for parking, done. Just kidding. Just kidding.
Maybe not.
No, no, it's, it's not a bad idea.
I know.
It's not a bad idea.
And my understanding is that there was discussion, I know there was, I was here for it, talking about parking garages and locations for them. And the other side was all of the drainage requirements for, for runoff from all of the parking garage. We are too close to water sources all the way around the entire downtown region. You had to, seventy five or a hundred foot setbacks. So there was nowhere downtown, we could put a parking garage where we would not have the runoff affect D E P requirements. Unless it was, like Josh might remember, multi-million dollar drainage fed up and all that, that needed to catch the stuff. So. Like I said, I, I don't know if there is a solution other than I just, I'd love to know why we're doing it still.
Let me, just because I'm in the business, I've just come up with ideas for people to shoot down. Have we ever touched the, the third rail of parking meters?
Hmm. Oh, yeah, that's the third rail.
And, and, and maybe, but only seasonally.
Right.
Is what, is I was thinking about it today. From maybe Memorial Day to Labor Day or Columbus Day or something like that. I see somebody shaking their hands out back.
So, I would make a recommendation for you that.
It's a thought. Have we considered it? And if we haven't, and for good reasons, we've rejected it, that's fine. So.
I see. There's, there's definitely some stuff written down as to reasons why we did not move forward, pay for parking, probably would be, you have to look it up because I would screw the verbiage up. But yes, it's been discussed more than once.
Okay.
I think we've done surveys on it.
Well, I'm, I'm sure people are not going to like it, but, but.
Right.
But it's a way to, it's a way to force turnover.
It is. So what's.
No, but, but I would not suggest a meter. No, you, you do a, you do a kiosk these days. So you don't, you don't have, you don't have a meter everywhere. You just have a central one. There was discussion about it a few years ago, but there was.
Why not that?
I don't know the details for me, but.
There was a reason.
Yeah.
There was.
Oh, there's snow plowing. Is that the other?
Yeah, but this isn't meters though.
I believe, I believe there was some, I believe there was some funds involved as well.
There, there's.
Correct. Yeah.
There was some, there was some funding changes. I, I, I don't have the details in front of me, but.
I would tell you to look that up.
Spend, well, we can.
Okay. You'll get it. You'll see.
Well, I'll, I'll hear stories later. So I just.
Yeah. I'm fuzzy on the details right now.
But it is a valid question. And normally I would, would come with a solution. But again, I don't have a solution because I really just don't know. It's been. Okay, articles on Lincoln County.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I just want to know, I think it would be awesome if we could just figure out if, if, if the intentions is still the same. And if they are.
I, I, I mean, I.
Our cake and eat it too. We can't like have all the employees there and then still have clients.
So I, I guess I can speak, I mean, I don't think the intentions of the ordinance have changed. The, the, the intentions of it were for turnover for clients, customers, people coming in. I, I, I would say the intentions of that ordinance with the, with the, with the parking limits was just for that. I mean, that's.
I can't think of anything else.
No, and that's what it is. So the, 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 it, it's a, we've developed a catch twenty two problem where it's said, okay, I, you know, we need to turn over our clients, but I don't want my employees to have to go anywhere. So they can park as long as they want, but now there's no spots for
Right.
customers. So, so it's, it's, it's not a problem that the P D is going to be able to solve. We, you, you just need direction that, from the board that yeah, the idea was create turnover for, 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 for clients to keep rolling them through. The bigger issue, which is what I think it's going to segue into what you're digging into right now and trying to work on with, with, you know, several different people is finding out alternate ways to park. And that's the, I mean, that's the, the big issue.
Issue.
And I, I think we all, as I, myself included as representing a business downtown, we need to look inward, you know, at ourselves and go, we're the biggest part of that parking problem.
Mm hmm.
I, 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 I'll admit it, you know, I mean, I take up a lot of spots and I try to move them around, but I. Uh I I I'll admit it, you know, I mean, I take up a lot of spots and I try to move them around, but I I absolutely take advantage of the parking lot. Said, hey, it's right there. So I'm just as guilty as the rest of them and we've got to uh.
And you should be more conscientious. You are the head of the select.
Boy, I can admit fault.
And do something about it.
So it 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 needs to be, yeah, and 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 the idea of parking passes, as you said, does not work. Um I I've seen, I remember when they did that and and next thing you know, yeah, everybody's got a parking pass and everybody, their brother has a parking pass.
Yes.
And you don't have a list of people and cars and plate numbers that are supposed to be attached to those parking passes, it doesn't work that way.
But even if I did, you, we talk about resources and how long that takes, right? For me to go through a book of what could be potentially two hundred and fifty or three hundred tickets or 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 um permits. To try to flip through and see what vehicle that's attached to and did they buy a new car and I remember all of this and.
Also, if you're spending all this time with parking that's getting nowhere, it's not being effective. Well, that's your manpower isn't being utilized properly.
Well, and that's why we have the parking enforcement officers, which we're lucky that we're continuing to get good officers who do it, you know, um. But again, at some point, at some point, and I'm not saying every business down there is terrible, in fact, they're all wonderful, but they get frustrated. Right? And so my parking attendants this year have come back to me almost every single day to say, there's a lot of angry people right now. And because when they're not gonna yell at me, they yell at my parking attendant because they're the ones that just told them to do it. In fact, we went to the extreme because there are no two hour parking signs on Elm Street. They were taken down, but they are under the ordinance. That Elm Street is still a two hour parking. So instead of writing tickets, because Andy and I discussed getting some signs back up there again and it wasn't appropriate to ticket. I said, let's do some warnings for a little while to remind people. I got yelled at just as many times for the warnings. Because five years ago, we took the signs down because of X, Y, and Z. Well, well, fine, great, we probably did. So we just talked and we said, all right, we'll just get the signs back up, but we need to discuss, do we wanna do that? And is that, are we gonna stick to this? And if we do, great, then we'll enforce it. We just, we have to do on our end. We have to make sure on our end that we've got the appropriate signage out because writing a ticket and wasting all of our time on an appeals process. I'm gonna, I would agree to the to the person that says, hey, it's not, it's not marked. If I went and parked somewhere in a town and it doesn't say no parking or or uh two hour parking and there's no sign anywhere, I agree. I wouldn't know, why would I know?
Exactly.
So and we're and we're on board with that, we're gonna get that taken care of, but it's just for every, for every. One or two businesses that are kind of upset and bummed out about it, there's half a dozen more that want it. And it's it's and they're fighting downtown and there's turmoil and just trying to figure out, making sure that we're enforcing this. The way that the select board wants it enforced. Cause you, essentially, this is your baby and we just enforce based on what the town wants, right? What the select board. So if everybody is on board that we can make some changes, I think Andy and I spoke about.
Can I ask you one more question? Because as I read through the the ordinance, um there there's discussion of penalties and fines. Have we ever collected any penalties?
Just just parking tickets, just tickets, oh yeah.
We do.
Yeah, I, Andy, I don't know what our revenue is generally. It's typically somewheres between, I think, forty five hundred and ten thousand.
Okay.
A year. It doesn't pay for parking, it doesn't even pay for the officers, which is not its intended purpose. It's not supposed to be a revenue source.
But it's supposed to discourage people from parking.
That's it, it's the, yes, exactly. My staff, I changed their name from a parking enforcement officer to a parking enforcement ambassador. Three, two or three years ago.
Couple of years.
And it doesn't say an officer on it at all anymore. They have been told uh and they're trained. To write as li- little tickets as possible to get the job done. I said, I don't want you to go around every two to three hours and then write the tickets. I want you to be where you need to be. So when somebody illegally parks in that spot, you can go over and say, please don't park there. Let me show you where you could park. And if you, if there's no parking there, I can't help you. And that has been great. Our parking tickets have gone down, but our parking issues have gone down as well. Because the, they're putting between ten and fifteen miles a day on their.
They've done the last couple of years, they've done a great job with education.
Right, that's what it's supposed to be. So when somebody gets a ticket, they have deserved it.
Okay, yeah.
And they take pictures of every single ticket. I have hundreds of photos on my phone and so. So again, we changed it up to not make it, because it's never been designed as a revenue. We're not trying to make money. The whole design of this is to scare people. With a fine amount, so they don't park. I don't know if you guys have been following, but Bootby Harbor brought their tickets up to sixty dollars this year. And I was looking at um some stuff online today and on average, a parking ticket now is between forty and sixty dollars in most places. We're twenty five.
When we say average to park in like the city of Portland for a couple of hours.
Great question.
Boston for a couple of hours.
Well, I think Boston's like eight or ten dollars an hour or something foolish, whatever it may be, but.
Uh one thing that, you know, and I I I don't know if we have anybody, so we have somebody in from uh on the on the the screen there. But um with with the downtown tenants, um it's it's interesting over the years of uh one thing that I've heard and I, you know, I don't know. But you have certain buildings that do not have parking and and uh you you always hear occasionally that the. Whoever the landlord may be has says they they provided parking in the public parking lot and I'd be curious at some point to. If somebody would be willing to like, you know, what's the lease agreement say, you know, I I would be, I'd be curious to see if 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 one of the like the day block or somebody in those apartments has like. Oh, my lease agreement says that parking is provided by the landlord. Um but they don't have parking. They, you know, the 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 parking have to be provided by the public parking areas, so it'd be curious to how a. Landlord could provide a parking spot for the tenant but not have parking to provide, you know, I I I'm.
I've never laid eyes.
I never have. I I I've heard that on and off, but I can't, I mean, probably heard that before over the years, but.
Mm hmm.
I I it it just, it'd be kinda curious to say like, hey, my, you know, here's my lease agreement, it says I have parking here for two vehicles, like where?
Um I I have read it.
Because.
I've read in the lease agreements about winter parking. Definitely telling them that you've got winter parking over here in this particular area and focused on it. I personally have never seen one where it says. That they can essentially park wherever they need to in public parking.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just curious if if somebody, you know, has a lease agreement that says that, you know, my landlord has provided me with parking and I. Where might that be? So well, the public parking lot. Well, it, you know, they they can't guarantee a spot because it's it's a public parking lot. You know, that's a, that's an issue, so.
And we don't, there is no favoritism.
Yeah.
You know, myself, my wife has gotten a parking ticket down there before and we've paid it. It's not, it 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 doesn't matter if you're a business owner, if your car's parked there, if somebody, it, my my parking and in ambassadors have been told. It doesn't matter who it is, if it's a marked car with blue lights on, right, and they've done a traffic stop somewhere, that's very different. But if it's a vehicle, I mean, I I don't know how many times I've had text messages and they've said, hey, it looks like such and such vehicle, they work here. Yeah, they get a ticket and they can come in and appeal that with me and we'll deal with it, but it's it's, there's no favoritism here, right? We're trying to do what the ordinance says we're supposed to do and that's what we get paid to do, so.
It's messy.
Yeah.
Messy down there, it really is.
But it needs to not be. We need to fix it. We, the select board, we need to fix it.
What's your solution?
I'm serious, I really, I honestly think that we should put in the kiosks and and have tickets. So that you, it's labeled, then you just go around and look at them.
So understand that the kiosks, um I I I go back to kiosks as a revenue. Stream, okay? I only say that because they're gonna prepay for their time. You're still gonna have to have a parking enforcement officer because they're gonna go over their time and the parking enforcement officer is still gonna have to go deal with that, right? So is is that helping turnover or are more people just going to go there and park for three or four hours, pay their three or four dollars? I don't know if a kiosk is gonna do what the ordinance is intended to do. That's my problem is move the cars, right? If worried.
Enforcement perspective.
Hundred percent, oh my gosh, yes, that's way.
Once they get a ticket, they won't do it again.
Well, maybe they may not.
Yeah, that's, Andrea, I I will tell you, you'd be shocked at how many, how many multiple tickets we get.
Awareness thing too, though, when you have to go to the the little kiosk and 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 get your little thing and put it back in your car.
Yep.
So.
And it is a lot easier to enforce. Again, we're not, as a police department, we're not generating revenue. That's not our job, right? That's from a municipal government standpoint, we're not supposed to be generating revenue.
To be serving the.
Community.
Yes.
Correct.
And if those store owners need to have customers and we're not providing spaces for them, that's our problem.
Well, well, it's our, I can represent both sides, but it it's our own problem, but we, again, as a as a business. Running a business downtown, it's a problem that we've created on our own. I mean, the town can't provide me with eight parking spots for my employees and. You know, I have to.
Well, why should the town provide you with that?
Well, you just said they should, so I'm I'm just countering that. I, you know, it's it's not a.
The kiosk to keep.
It's it's not a select board's gonna fix it. We we have to get the business owners downtown. We have to face the facts that. We are taking up a great amount of those parking spots and we have to come up with a long term solution to find out a way to get our employees off site. It it it's it's as simple. I mean, I really like to see a count of employees' vehicles down there, because I think it's gonna scare us.
And and did you have that?
Yeah.
Um of the twenty three responses, we had, one of the questions we had asked was, how many off site spots does your business or building require? Between eight and five, eight A M and five P M. Um of the twenty three responses, a hundred and fourteen spots were identified.
Out of twenty three responses right now.
Yeah.
A hundred and fourteen parking spots.
Between eight and five, yeah.
Off of their property.
Right.
Yeah, so there's problem number one right there.
I've done the counts.
Place for anyone to shop, so why even have shops?
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
Fifteen of those twenty three um had said that they rely on the public parking spaces solely. Um they don't, I mean, they don't own, like you've said before, very few properties or businesses or properties down there own spots between. Actually, your your, the business you manage, back down to the entrance, there are a few.
There's a handful of, yeah, there's a scatter.
Building, it's not many, yeah. That's really about it.
Um so that's that's out of a a low response count right now and that's a, yeah, that's. Yeah, I said that we'd probably be shocked, but that's more than I was gonna expect. Um so we we right now, you're you're working with a group. Um about, you know, short term issues with 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 parking right now because of the parking lot project. But um I I would hope, I mean, how do you feel? It it it, do you think something's gonna come out of that? Or if if it's uh if we shifted a little bit to like, okay, we're identifying some short term issues, but how can we? You know, move those short term issues into a longer term, but do you see any movement there or?
I know.
Working with maybe?
I know some businesses already do and some have, given the parking lot project that's coming up. Uh lease spots from private property owners.
Yeah, I've heard of that, yeah.
They knew their employees would have a place to park.
Yeah.
I know Iders does that for all their people.
Yeah, um so some do that um already and so I don't know if there's more to be done there. If if, you know, especially if you're a residential tenant like and asking where am I parking? I mean, that's something that maybe. The folks that own dwelling units down there might consider, um that was one of the questions, uh are you willing and able um to consider. Um securing your own spaces off site. Um and I didn't pull up the responses on that, but. Um we did ask that, so that'll be part of the feedback we get. It would be nice to get a few more, what a few more responses than the twenty three. There's a lot more buildings down there and businesses, but.
Um yeah, it'd be great to get a full, full amount of surveys out of that. Yeah.
Especially since there's a lot of people yelling at you.
I've grown to have thick skin. It is what it is.
I think it's more, I mean, the frustrated is fine, I mean, I I get it, um there's a lot going on in the summertime. The solutions would be helpful, like instead of just hearing, this doesn't work, like, well, what what would work? Um really, uh that's why we need to take it. Um we know the way this is written. Changes aside that need to be made, like it's just there's not enough spaces down there for all the needs.
No, right, and and what are the solutions, what can we do? Yeah, and there never will be and and it's growing and and it's it's just, there's, the space is limited. So unless you go up, uh which again, I don't think we can, a parking garage down the middle of town probably would uh wouldn't go over too well. But I don't know if we can fit it into the historical, under the store bar and somehow.
They don't, they don't like my answer sometimes.
Street.
I say, I say that it could be worse. We could not have a parking problem, which means nobody's coming down here to shop and they're not coming to visit our community. So as frustrating as it can be, being booked, uh being booked and having people drive around the lot for forty five minutes speaks volumes. To how badly people wanna be in our little community and shop at our wonderful stores, right? So again, and and a lot of them are willing to do that and they're also willing to pull up on the curb and they're willing to park in the boat launch and they're willing to do. A million different other things so they can illegally park their cars. I will tell you one thing I'd like to see when the parking lot is done before we striped it. I'd love to get, and Andy and I talked a little bit, is I'd love to get a couple more oversized vehicle parking spots. Cause we struggle with that, because right now what we have available is only a truck with a boat trailer. And that's it, where we have one oversized parking spot now that we're fighting, I mean, that's.
But you do have, I've seen it, you have situations where folks come in and they park in the boater's parking because they have a trailer, so well, I'm overs下来, they pull in and then they. Get ticketed because they're not a boat.
Correct.
And and yeah.
And we appreciate that they didn't take up two spots in the white lines and we have that happen a lot and then campers will come in, big. Big million dollar campers will come in and take four spots and they get a ticket because they don't fit in one or two spots.
Yeah.
And I don't have anywhere to put them and we want them in our town because they are coming to shop and they are coming to buy diesel fuel, right? And they're coming to do wonderful things in our community. I love it. I love that they're visiting us. We just don't have anywhere to put them. And we have eighteen wheeler trucks that I wish we had a rule that says they have to do all their drop offs by eight or nine o'clock in the morning. We don't have it. Maybe that's something to talk about, but an eighteen wheeler, I feel bad for the guys and gals. They're trying to wheel in there and deliver half of a refrigeration truck full of food and they have nowhere to go.
Yeah.
And we try to find him a spot, but it's always gonna be, and then we will let him do that and then somebody sees it and then they get pissed off and say, I got a ticket last time I was there. Right, because you had a four wheeler on the back of your trailer and you weren't delivering in commerce or trying to help the businesses, right? So.
Yes, this is a catch twenty two with, yeah.
It would be really great.
Struggle all this summer with tries, you know, deliveries, trying to get in, coming down the wrong way, just trying to fit the truck in, it's like, just go wherever you need to to get your delivery done.
We try, you know, and that's what the ambassadors have been taught is to say, okay, I know that this may be ish private property. And this may be not a great spot, but put them there and tell them you've got forty minutes. I can work with you for forty minutes and they're all very grateful. Versus letting them park there, letting them start to get unloaded, coming around the corner and being like, nope, you need to move.
Yeah.
Jesus, they're halfway through their delivery, I get it. They get pissed off, they yell and scream at the poor parking enforcement. All parking enforcement's trying to do is do what they've been paid to do and what we've told them to do. So that's why we we changed our approach of writing the ticket, tell them to leave to help them. Let's figure out if this is a safe place to do it. We even have cones down there.
Mm hmm.
So if we needed to put a truck somewhere, we could, we steal yours most of the time, but you know, we can say, okay, park right here, we'll put a couple of cones out, so at least. Hopefully the driver doesn't get run over, right? It's just, again, there's. I know, I'd I'd rather us be busy because that means money's being spent, businesses are making money, employees are getting paid, we're super stoked. It's just trying to figure out, if you want three hours, we're gonna do three hours. And we'll make that turnover work and we'll write the tickets and we'll continue on what we're doing. I just wanna make sure that we have the support of the board. Because I'm not the only person that's getting yelled at. I'm sure people are coming to board members and saying, this is ridiculous. You guys haven't enforced parking enforcement for three hours forever. I can tell you we've done over three hundred three hour parking tickets since I've been here. So we absolutely have enforced this. We have not for four years. Just so you all know, if somebody comes up and complains, it's not because we're lazy and we didn't wanna do it. It's because we couldn't do it for a little while.
No, there were reasons.
There were reasons behind it and we were asked specifically by by a multitude of business people to say, hey, we're really nervous. Cause we wanna make sure we're getting turnover, so people are spending money, so when September comes and we shut the parking lot down, we'll have made a little extra, maybe, hopefully. So that's why we did it. It was, that's, we tried our best and it's been a giant pain in the butt. But we're doing our best with what we've got to work with.
Well, that's our job, make things more difficult for.
Like, we need that.
Um. I.
Um.
And.
It's especially quiet down there.
So I'm just listening to everybody else's.
Because this is.
Is the goal. I've been here for a while.
Yeah.
And I've heard it all.
And we really, I I mean, I am sure places like Wiscasset have lost a lot of business. Because.
Their parking.
Could be.
Parking, I don't know, maybe.
We got more now than they, other, other lots now, we've got more than they used to have.
But they have lots, we don't even have that.
There we go, we have a big lot out there.
When you look at other towns, there obviously there's 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 multiple other towns across the 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 mid coast that have, that have tried this. And are working on it, right? And whether they did pay for parking, whether they did, they up their tickets, I mean, there's a magnitude of things. We're not the only one with this problem. Uh but and we're dealing with uh, we're dealing with issues.
I mean, the simple, if if you do the simple math, I mean, the reality is. The the amount of space downtown can't provide ample space for every tenant, for every employee. And all the clients, customers that are coming in, uh all at once. It 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 can't, it's, I mean, it's that simple. We can look at, if we had all the numbers and got all the surveys back, I mean, that's a huge number right now from what you've heard and and uh it just doesn't math out. It's that simple. So you either. Remove the, leave the 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 tenants and all the employees, get rid of the clients and customers, which isn't a good idea. Or you pull, you know, I I I I think, you know, exactly pulling the, you know, the the longer term social be. Getting employees somewhere out of town, I mean, tenants is tricky because. Your house is there, I, I can understand some of that, like, I'm not, I, I can't park, you know, a half a mile away and, and, and get a ride back and forth to my house, so there might be some. Vision there, but um, it, it's, it's, that employee count is huge, I mean, I, like I say, I can look in order of my own. Uh, the own business I run down there and go, yeah, I'm, there's at least seven, if not eight, you know, right there, I need to pull them out.
Huge, but how, what, what do you think the tenant count is?
Uh, it's one of the question in, in there in the survey is how many dwelling units do you have? Um, so we'll get.
And that number's a mix right now, right, that you, that you said that one fourteen or whatever, you had a rough count or something?
Yeah, yeah.
So, but it's a lot.
But we really kind of, it might help us if we could. Figure out how many employees are there versus how many tenants, and what's left for the people to.
Right, and remember too, we're talking about a problem that's four months out of the year. Yes, let's focus on that too, we're not talking about twelve months, it's.
It's more like six though, don't you think?
Uh, I mean, maybe.
The bulk of it, the, the intensity is.
Yeah, it's that big event. There's busy, there's busy days, there's definitely busy days off-season, and there always is going to be, right, we're anywhere, but we're talking about really. End of May into September. So five months, five months, re- really June, June is the kickoff, after Memorial Day weekend is when we start seeing it. And then once school gets out, is when it's just constant, non-stop until right around Labor Day, and it does fall off, but it stays busy. It stays plenty busy.
Basier earlier.
Oh, absolutely, again, we're on the map, we're in Down East Magazine, we're everywhere.
And the more that we want people to be successful in businesses, the more we need them to have parking.
Correct.
Uh, Dan had asked a question about revisions and kind of next steps on that, and so, I mean, my. My suggestion would be to, let's continue to get feedback through the parking lot project. And maybe over the winter, will parking, winter parking's a challenge, and people have a little more capacity to have meetings, uh, try and pick this up. For revisions through the late fall, early winter, so that we have something maybe different in place for next summer, having, having time for us to advertise and get that message out there. Um, but to continue to collect some feedback over the summer and.
It's a great idea, Andy, yes, we need feedback from the people.
You know, the, the trial run's gonna be this fall, um, I, I think there's gonna be some great information gleaned from that, um, you know, however that. Sorts out, I mean, we're gonna be, we're, downtown's gonna be forcing a position where. Uh, you know, you can't park in certain places, so that, that's, I mean, having that information there is gonna help guide, uh, guide something later on, so, yeah. Yeah, it's not gonna fix, it's not gonna get fixed this summer, oh, it's, it's July.
A little in deep.
Yeah, yeah, and so, so I, I mean, the spirit of the ordinance, I don't think's changed, it's turnover for. I, I, yeah, I, I'm not gonna. Direct a PD or anybody that can not change anything at this point, I mean, um, I, I will say, I, I think, um, over the years, the parking ambassadors and. And there's a lot in the title too, you know, I mean, we talk about meanings of words, but parking ambassador. Uh, it, they, they've done a great job with, um, I see it daily down there, catching somebody ahead, you know, like, hey. Don't park here but over there, you know, I, I, I've seen it for the last few years, there's some really great folks down there that, that are doing that, and people. Appreciate that, there's, it, it, it brings the, the temperature down a little bit, when you don't, you wait around the corner, I'm gonna write a ticket now, you know, they, uh, they, they do a great job of that. And that's, that's, that's helpful, so.
I'd suggest, longer term, you might. Think about and kind of play out the scenario of are there other locations in downtown area that are walkable, that are. Something that could be acquired or leased, or something that the town could try and negotiate. Um, if not immediately downtown, then the only other option to think about would be to find a satellite site. Satellite, somewhere else in town, and then a shuttle service of sorts, some, some towns do run like a seasonal shuttle type thing. Um, our town's not so, Bath does one, and then we're not as expansive as Bath is. Um, so I don't know, I mean, the, the only way that would work is to bring in folks in from a different location further up.
What a great business opportunity for an enterprise and capitalist out there to have a, a big remote site somewhere and run a shuttle service, you know, that'd be. I'm putting a call out there.
It's cheap as like just parking.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I, I mean, there's so many people that come in here in the summertime that literally if, if they knew that they could take a twenty-dollar shuttle, I know that seems high, but. I'm just saying, they, they would be like, sure, can I park my car there all day? Can I go down and shop? Can I get on the boat? Can I do the tours? Can I do everything I need to do and?
Don't have to fight the traffic.
You might be aware, the hospital has been doing this shuttle now for a few months.
Yeah.
Folks are, they've got it, um, so that some of their staff can park over off of Belvedere and Main Street at the church over there, and. We were dealing with them the last two days of the worksite we had set up there, and, um, so it's interesting to see people kind of coming and going from that lot all day.
Yeah.
I mean, that shuttle's going all day.
And, and that might be, you know, a, a good resource to, 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 you know, probe and say, hey, how's that working? You know, why do you have that set up? And, and, and. I mean, just, I know we have a decent relationship with them, but it's, it's.
I have.
It's a good, yeah, I, I know, yeah.
I was hoping they might expand.
Well, that's a great example anyway, you can use it, like, there's a network, not saying using the network, but they've already got something in place, like, how do you do this? What does it cost you? You know, it's, uh, be good to look into, so.
Yeah, they bought a van, a van that doesn't require, even when it's full, a, a, a special license, an endorsement, um. And, you know, they're able to offer that through a staff member that's available to help make the runs.
A little minivan with a blinking light on it. But it works, it works, so there are solutions out there, but we, you know, we have to. Fa- face the, as, as business downtown, we need to face that we are a huge part of our own problem.
Even heard those fresh baked cookies involved for those that had the van.
If you, if you put food in there, if you build it, they will come. Bake it.
Just a couple of. Like fifteen-minute places where you can stop and just run in and get something that you've already ordered.
We used to have that, we used to have it, and the only place that that really is effective, uh, it was out front of, um, Avantagio's, the butcher shop, before the butcher shop was there. Like that, because it's only one, one or two spots.
It's, it's easy to get in and out.
It's fun.
And it was quick, somebody could run in and grab their meat from there, whatever they needed, and he actually asked me about that a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Um, about wh- what would that look like, uh, in order to do it, and, and the people are gonna take advantage of it, and then we go back to. If somebody parks there for three or four hours, it defeats the entire purpose, and then they get a ticket, but the ticket doesn't help. The fact that they've just taken that spot away from what could be thirty cars, right?
Again, educating the people that this is there for a reason, and if you do take advantage, shame on you.
It used to be one hour parking on Main Street for a long time, and then that got advocated against back. Seventeen, eighteen, you were on the board, weren't you?
I've heard it all.
I can't, yeah, um, and then that got advocated because it is pretty tough to park, eat dinner. Do any shopping and get back to your car in an hour, I agree, it, it's pretty tough to do, which is why we switched to the two-hour parking revision on Main Street. So they could have a couple hours.
Yeah, and I.
Ordinance still says one.
One hour. Yeah, I'd be remiss too, though, that is, is there places where people could bike? And I know maybe that's not practical for, for a lot of people, but if, if, even if it's practical for five percent of the folks.
But they could bike, I'm sorry, I don't, real quick, what do you mean by that? I apologize.
Ride a bicycle, you know? And is there places where they can, um, park their bikes safely?
Oh, we talked, wasn't there some bike racks?
There are, right? Putting up more bike racks.
Yeah, or, or even a remote satellite parking lot where they could bike in.
They could park and then bike in.
Yeah, because people aren't gonna walk more than ten minutes anyway, fifty at the most, but.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if they'd walk that far.
But you could, yeah, right.
But yeah, you're right, I, I'm thinking to myself.
I don't know if that is.
A lot of bikes.
Just on the, on the margin, that's, that might help.
Yep, yeah, I think it'd be great, I think we set up, there's probably what, room for thirty or forty bikes downtown at various places?
I don't even venture a guess without looking, I mean, you could probably put a whole lot down there, I mean, probably take a, uh, effort of private. You know, and, are the employees, are the customers, and trying to understand that too would be helpful, because maybe the employers and the business owners couldn't do that on the property if they have it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe the employees, it would be, maybe that's more of a market than, than sort of seasonal people just coming and going.
I think Newcastle should set up an e-bike rental facility over there, so then they, everybody can park in Newcastle, rent a bike. And then drive it all through town. I don't care, it's Newcastle, I love Newcastle, I'm just saying.
You're gonna get a phone call tomorrow.
I'm trying to divert it out of town. They can be noble, but they're not in Newcastle.
I mean, in the summer months, there's a little more availability at the schools, but.
Correct, yes.
So, um, just to move things along, um, yeah, at this point.
Okay.
Ordnance is what it is, the spirit of the ordinance hasn't changed, um, and it's a long, I mean. There's a lot of long-term stuff we gotta figure out, but I, I think, you know, with, with what you're working on right now, um, and, and the group you're working with, and we can, you know, obviously get involved with that. But I think some solutions are gonna come out of that as well, so we'll just.
Keep on keeping on.
Just keep getting yelled at, sorry.
Thank you very much.
All right, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
We've got more to do, if you wanna.
I can run, yeah.
Let's dive, is there any, uh, that was citizens comments, anybody else? Do you have anything coming in? I know there's, I, there's, there's one person online there, I think, um. I see it muted there, no hands up, so, yeah, that's Amanda.
Oh, I'm here.
Just you, yeah. Let's move through, Andy, you wanna touch, uh, some high points? You've got your manager's report here.
Sure.
So we're, they're not marked, but they're after the parking lot, uh, ordinance there, you're almost there.
After the ordinance?
Um, a lot going on.
Charter amendment?
Uh, there is a lot going on, um, the, it's not just, the report doesn't reflect all of it, but, um, no. Uh, of course, we switched over to the new fiscal year, the, you know, staff's got most of that taken care of, we'll be considering, uh, carry-forward, uh, requests. Probably, probably at the next meeting, just gotta work with some of the department heads about that. Um, things that maybe have been purchased haven't been received, or the bill hasn't come in as of today, today's warrant, but it was really a twenty-twenty. FY twenty-four expense, um, so the charter allows you to have a carry forward, so it's not hitting the new fiscal year. Um, and so we'll probably consider those, hopefully at the next meeting. Um, commitment, I, the assessors, agents due in, again, on the eleventh and Friday, uh, Thursday, Thursday, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll talk with them again, um, had mentioned it the last couple of times, Ed was here to make sure we're on target for mid-July for. What we need from them. Um, so we'll find out tomorrow how that looks, um, hopefully at the next meeting you'll have something to consider. For commitment, um, great, I didn't include, but we'll just share that, um, there was a non-mandatory pre-bid meeting for the winter maintenance contracts Monday. Um, there were two, um, two people that showed up for that.
Okay.
Um, I assume both representing their own interests, um, so there were some good questions, uh, um. Couple of things that I'll follow up on and, and update is Water Street from Cross to the End, uh, wasn't included in either contract, I think. I intended to switch it from one to the other, um, didn't put it in either, so.
Okay.
Intention would be to, I had mentioned at the meeting would be to include it in the town-wide contract, not the downtown contract, um, just because. Trying to keep the downtown clip, pretty minimal to where the snow dump permit is situated, um. You know, we got some other streets like Vine and Lewis Point that aren't part of the downtown contract either, so, um.
Right.
Kind of yeah, part of that, um, and then the capacity of the sand building, uh, was a question. Um, so I told my follow-up on that, shared what I thought it was, but I'll confirm and let them know.
Yeah.
Um, and questions about salt, um, if we do run out during, you know, during a storm. You know, is there either one of the contracts take priority over the, the remaining salt that might be left, or what happens if it is out? Um, so we'll do our best to keep it filled and available, um, the, the. The GP cog contract, I believe, had a one-day requirement to be delivered, um, which is another reason why I like that one, so.
Yeah, it's pretty good.
We do need to see it perform, so, um, but that's a separate matter that we'll hopefully be able to keep up on, um, trying that out this time, um. So I had to update folks on that before the bids are due the twenty-second, um, so there's still a couple of weeks for people to review that.
Gotcha.
Let's see, structural assessment for the sand salt shed buildings will be scheduled right now for the seventeenth of July.
Who's doing that again?
Uh, Gartley Dorst.
Gartley Dorst.
I'd asked two other companies, one said they wouldn't, um, do that, and I never heard back from the third one. So, I went with them, I think it was thirty-five hundred bucks to, which was a lot less than I expected.
Yeah, and it's gonna be done.
That's great.
So, um, Michael's working on land use amendments as well as, uh, finalizing the TIF, the application had gone in, there was some feedback and some additional data. And data points they needed, and some couple minor corrections, um, so he's working through those final things with that, hopeful that. That could be potentially approved before commitment, because that'll impact the commitment, um. And they've been pretty quick to respond, so we just gotta get the package back to them. The land use ordinance amendments, I've, I've got the planning boards working through those, um, some of it's to make sure we're fully compliant with LD two thousand and three. Um, some of it's just some challenging language, uh, that's been in there, um, that's either hard to interpret or leaves it open to. A range of interpretations, and that's not helpful either, um, so he's been working on trying to fix some of that.
A lot going on, Andy. How's everybody?
Especially in the summer with all the construction.
It's a lot, yeah, um, how's everybody keeping up, staff and everything, uh, keep, keeping up with everything and?
I think pretty good, um, you know, getting through the election cycle in June and then through fiscal, fiscal year end.
Fiscal, I know, that's always a crunch.
Lots to do, but if there's ever a, a time to breathe throughout the year, I think this was kind of the one time they generally have to take a breath.
Yeah.
Um, again, they're working hard, but.
It is of all the other things that pile up throughout the year, this is kind of a, a good time for them.
And when you look at this list of all the jobs that they have, they have a lot of jobs.
Lot going on. All right. Any, uh, any questions or anything for Andy and? Moving along, all right, uh, let's, uh, move on to official action items, and, um, we do have a list of, uh. Appointments, uh, for board and committees and whatnot, has everybody had a chance to, to peruse those? Long as Charlie all gets his fence viewer.
He'll be all set.
That's the only one I was concerned about, you know, is anybody up running against him this year, or?
Nope.
Good, okay.
There were a couple, um.
You had some questions, yeah.
Yeah, Becky had prompted a few questions, um, I think both towns do appoint harbor master. Um, each town, I believe, has to have one, and so.
I think we haven't passed.
Shared ordinance, and they're the employee of Newcastle, but I think each town still has to.
Yeah.
Don't we give one and they give one?
Um, in the past, uh, they had told us they had appointed a deputy, we appointed the same deputy.
Okay.
Um, and that was Bernie, uh, Delisle.
Right. As deputy harbor master.
Right.
Okay.
Um, going down number eleven, the animal control officer, we do that via contract, um, not aware that we named the contract as. That, because we have it in place, just refer to the contract.
Right.
Yeah.
And then harbor committee. Um, Mike Hurst had resigned in the spring, Bernie is, uh, presumably the deputy harbor master still. Um, so that would make him ineligible for the harbor committee role.
Okay, so is he still, you've got, uh, yeah, deputy harbor master, one-year term, that Bernie's still doing that?
Um, it's my understanding, I don't know if, um, where it was blank, if. Becky was able to reach him or not.
So, is this, do we actually go out?
Now we don't.
People, or, or is it just basically?
Once you got it, you got it forever.
It's a lifetime appointment, basically, okay.
They can't have it.
Yeah.
Usually Becky will check in with everyone on there.
So now we don't have a harbor committee.
There's, so, uh, she was asking about the harbor committee, there's still a harbor committee, this is just showing the openings.
I mean, he's saying, I'm saying that with Bernie moving to deputy harbor and Michael off because he's only here half the year.
Well, he's off because he resigned, but yeah.
Yeah, Mike.
Resigned because he's not here half, he's only here half the time.
He's not on, yeah, there's more, more on the.
In another state the other half.
Right. So there's room for folks to join if they'd like to.
Right.
I think our sole representative for Damar Scott is, um, Stephen Huffnagle.
Oh, really?
Does, who's seat on that committee is.
Committee board?
Yeah.
Okay.
So right now, um, you said Becky had reached out to very, but we, it, we're not sure if he's still.
Correct.
Wants that position on, we can just appoint him, and he doesn't have a choice.
Good.
Um, can, can always change it later on.
Can I, I, Bernie, out there.
Yeah.
Let me ask another question, um. Um, are these all within our charter that we have to have somebody in all these positions? Because it seems like, like. Not that I want to take a job away from Charlie, I mean, I like him, but, um, but like fence viewer, sealer of weights.
Yeah, there's a list in the charter.
Charter, you have to, you have to do them.
Yeah.
So if you amended the charter, you could take him out?
Correct.
Or are they?
It might be some stuff required by state statute.
Some state required.
Yeah, you'd have, you'd have to, you'd have to, yeah, go through state statute.
If it's not state required, yeah, you could.
Okay. Now, don't, not fence viewer now.
And what happens?
When was the last time that he actually performed an official act?
I think he did one last year.
I think he did, I think in recent history.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Someone called the office about tree cutting or something in the fence, and I said, oh, that's something for the fence viewer.
Excellent, okay.
Yeah, I think he actually had, yeah. We always, we kind of joke about, I think Charlie has a card, I think he has his own business cards and say, that's.
State useless.
So, yeah, so right now, uh, as presented, Andy, um, you know, we've got the harbor master now, uh, under ACO. Um, do we, we wanna, we don't need that, or we scratch that, or should we still present it, um?
I mean, I think it's taken care of.
It's taken care of anyway, so.
Yeah.
So no harm, no foul, if we, if we, uh, okay, the list, the ones are highlighted, so, so eleven, eleven is, ACO is contracted.
That's contracted, so it's not a problem.
Yeah. Um, and then the only change would be we have, uh, Bernie listed under Harbor Committee, but if he's a deputy harbor master, he can't be on the committee, right?
Why can't?
So, well, he'd oversee himself.
Oh, oh, oh goodness gracious.
So, um.
So he's harbor master with Eric Peters.
Right, so what we could do is we could move the list as presented, um, with, and I, 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 now, I guess I could put Bernie in there, but I'd probably like to talk to him first to see if he wants to do it, right?
Yeah, we can always take that up at the next.
Yeah, so I can do with exception of the, um, we could leave the Harbor Committee and the, and the deputy harbor master open right now, so, okay.
Go ahead, can I book you one more?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
So, um, I know that you've, um, enjoyed being the health officer.
No, I have not. Um.
I didn't. I had approached, uh, a doctor, and he expressed some interest, uh, but I don't know if we ever followed up with him.
I don't recall.
I may recall that you had made a connection, I just.
If you have a name, I will move his name on this list.
No, you can't move it until you.
Can. Daryl can make a motion.
Well, if you, yeah. If I see, if I see him out in his yard, I'll, I'll just say, hey, let's walk downtown and talk to Daryl.
Would, would you please, like I said, I'm, uh, I, I don't feel that I'm qualified to be the Damerscott, uh, town Damerscott health officer.
And mother deputy harbor master.
Uh, get a check around, and Bernie, Bernie, Bernie may be interested, we just haven't, it hasn't been confirmed.
No, no, how do we find a harbor committee person? If Bernie's gonna do that, great.
But he's gotta, yeah, be interested in it, and then, uh, you know, the committee, generally what happens sometimes is the committees themselves reach out to folks that they know that are interested, so, uh, it might be something Stephen may, Huffnagle may know somebody, Bernie may know somebody on there. Uh, uh, you know, Mike is, hers is around, so Mike may know somebody that might be interested, so a lot of it's word of mouth, yeah, a lot of it's word of mouth, so.
Just suckin'.
So I'll, I'll, um, I'll make a motion to, um, to move the annual appointments to board and committees, um, with exception of the deputy harbor master and the harbor committee appointments right now. That'll make sense, everybody.
Weights, dude. Sealer of weights.
When we don't have one, the state assumes that responsibility.
Yeah, the state covers that, so.
Oh, they do anyway.
Yeah, and I'd say better for them to do that, it's a lot involved, a lot, but.
Josh was telling me that.
Yeah, let me, I do have, I have a motion, so just need a, either a second, then we can do a discussion, so, okay, give your second, so. Yeah, so, so your question on the sealer awaits, um, yeah, town, if a town has one, they don't rely on the state, but if the town doesn't have to have one, the state comes and steps in.
Okay.
Occasionally, you might see them every six, eight, ten years, so I've, I've been through that, I have called them.
They would come.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
It took me four years to get, um, our brand-new dispensers sealed. And we put them in twenty nineteen, it was twenty twenty-three before they came and sealed them, so, yeah, so.
That's great and competent.
Um, are any more discussion on the annual appointments? Okay, all, all those in favor?
I'm abstaining.
Josh, you're gonna abstain?
What else you like?
You're not supposed to. Point a family member.
Yeah.
Who's your family member?
The one that says Ian Pinkham?
The ones, yeah.
Good, well, are we, is this also Josh Pink, well, Public Works Committee, and just?
Right, I'm on it.
He's on the Public Works Committee as well.
But as a.
Oh, I see she's on the Board of Appeals.
Yeah. Yeah, so he can, it's okay on, Josh is okay being on that, that committee, yeah, he's not overseeing, doesn't have any oversight.
Okay.
Um, all right, moving along, uh, qualified catering organization application.
Yeah, there we go.
Catered event, um, this is for, uh, the Coastal Rivers Conservation Trust at Round Top Farm.
Make a motion to approve it.
I'll take them.
All right, I heard a motion, got a second, any, uh, discussion?
No.
Those in favor? All right, moving along, okay. Um, that should did on, uh, action items, so, um, let's go through, so we do have, uh, on our agenda, we have several select board discussion items, the Andy, number two on there, the emergency response standards, is that the OSHA stuff, so I know.
It's all in here.
Yeah, so just to, um, uh, transparency, um, the, there was a regular, the Massoid Engine Company, Damerscott Fire Department had a, um, a, a regular meeting there, and, uh, uh, three board members happened to be in, in there, uh, wasn't a regular meeting, we were in advertised, um, uh, but we, we were able to listen in on some of that, and I gather that the, um, Chief Roberts is he would have presented tonight on it, but he needs more, he's, he's following up with more information, so we want to dive into that now, wait, I think we should wait till he's available to.
Uh, so the comments will be due the twenty-second of July unless they get extended again for a third time. Um, so the plan would be if you had any feedback or any lingering or follow-up questions after what you heard last night.
Yeah.
You could, you know, offer those now, and I could follow up with John with those, and then he, he would plan to draft a letter um, for comment, um, on the public comment period here.
It sounded, I mean, for, for myself listening, I mean, I, I, Chief's been in his position for quite a while, and he's the best person to, to speak on, on those things, so he sounded like he has you know, they have concerns, and, and he was just putting the word, you know, the verbiage together, uh, to draft what he needed to, so I'm, I'm, I'm happy as a board member to let them continue and, and put that together, and, um, it sounds like there's some legitimate concerns with it, and they were, they're, they're ahead of them anyway, so I don't know how, um, rest of the board members feel, anything to add to that, or just, you know?
Well, I don't know how we can, what else we can do except as citizens, there's things we can do, but as a board, I don't think anything.
I, I don't have any unique insights into, I mean, other than short, you know, one size fits all seems like a, a problem. You know, it's, it's certainly a huge problem for volunteer fire departments, you know, smaller fire departments, I think this is gonna be a real struggle.
Yeah.
Um, other than, other than, other than if, other than if the board wanted to just make a short letter, you know, comment letter, just I would be one of another three thousand or whatever the number was in there already.
The other thing that we could do once, um, uh, Chief Roberts puts together his comments or whatever, we can, um, I know it's a short period of time, but, um, it could also come with support of the board from Damerscott, so we could co-sign something if that's, you know, proper, I guess, you know, it depends on what he, what he writes out, so.
Sure.
I mean, we can, and that is support for the.
I think we need to.
Yeah, I, I think, I think, I think that's good, I think, I think that, I think the board should weigh in on it, in some way.
You've been, you've talked to the chief, I know he's running through, so, I mean, as soon as he gets something together, I mean, we can get it out to us, we can share it with us, and then we can either, you know, say, hey, yeah, we support this or whatever, and move from there, so it'd be best, it's, it's just one qualified to, to speak on, on it, so, okay.
I will say it'll probably change.
Yeah.
Uh, makeup.
Mm-hmm.
Totally.
A lot.
There's a lot of concerns, I had a lot of concerns last night on it.
A bunch of problems with this.
So, um, I think it's, it's definitely something that we, we need, you know, in public, need to discuss more in-depth once he, you know, he gets the stuff out, so I, I don't, I don't want to rush through it this meeting, but when, with the chief not here, and he's working on some stuff, I think he just needs to get out front to the, to the public as well, to see what the fire department's are facing, so.
How can we have a public meeting before it's too late?
The, the, the comment period closes, right, he's gotta put comments in, but I, but our next meeting, I mean, we're not gonna be able to, the chief's not able to be here tonight because he, he, this is all happening, I guess, rapidly, so.
Correct.
Um, we, we may need to follow up on our next, next meeting, have him come in and give us an update or something like that, but, but before, yeah, because when's the next meeting?
This meeting is too late.
Maybe, I mean.
To make comments.
Well, if you're just back.
You can get the comments in.
His comments.
We still, right.
Support his comments.
Yeah, we can still have a open discussion about it in a, in a regular select board meeting, the comments need to go in regardless, so I've been, yeah, we'll have him move along and get him up to as soon as he's got something ready, and we can, we can support it if need be, so. Um, great, all right, um, work plan, Andy, twenty twenty-four?
Um, yeah, I was just providing that.
Yeah.
To you, to kind of try and give an update on where things fell for the year.
Does anybody have any?
That was great, Andy, what you did.
Yeah, this is, this is nice, I like, it was broken down, that's. Yep, um, does anybody have any, uh, yeah, any questions or any concern, I mean, it's, it's, it's.
Self-explanatory.
Self-explanatory, I do like the, uh, um, do appreciate this format with the percentage, you know, where we're at and whatnot.
Exactly, so this, so this was FY twenty-four work plan, so I just want to talk about FY twenty-five, just put in, because we're not suggesting we're gonna replace this one right now, because we, we have a comp plan coming along, and, and I'm gonna guess the, the comp plan should inform the, any new work plans as they go forward. So, so the sense of the board is that we will continue to work on these until such time as we have an opportunity.
It's a, it's a living document, you know, too, so, you know, I think in the past, what, what, um, and Josh can probably test us more, it was, it was visited, like you know, beginning of the year, and that was it, you know, we'd visit it and go, okay, here's the work plan.
Yeah, you, you set your goals and.
Yeah.
You know, we, the, the way we have everything on here is, it's continuous, I mean, it's.
So as, I, I think to Dan's point, as, as the comp plan comes in, there might be some changes, possible priority changes maybe or something like that, but it's, it's a yeah, it's an ongoing, we can revisit this anytime.
But that's gonna be approved by our voters.
Sure.
It's gonna be approved by the state, and then we've, so you're getting to the point where we might be in the next fiscal year.
Well, it'll, hopefully it'll inform the next budget.
Right.
But this is, but it just says FY twenty-three, twenty-four, so we're just saying that we're gonna.
Yes, just current.
Carry it forward, we're just gonna carry it forward.
Right, right now, the idea would be, you know, looking over, it, it gives us an update on, on where things are, and if there's any, you know, to, uh, direction for Andy would be like, oh, hey, you know, this is, this is more of our priority now than there, than the other ones are, but I didn't see anything in it that, that uh, you know, where, where the priority list, the medium and high, I mean, everything looks like it's pretty well where it's spanned right now, you know, continuing on some projects and, and, um, we just need to, yeah, I think, I think all of us do, we just need to revisit this more often, so, yeah.
I think we do too.
Just keep up with it, so.
Only, only to help Andy.
Well, just to make sure that, you know, we're, we a staffer, I mean, my, I'm kind of hopeful that with the comp plan, once it gets approved, that the board might entertain a, maybe a three-year work plan, so that when we are building our budgets, that it's not annual, I mean, here we are, we already got the budget approved for FY twenty-five, but that aren't necessarily, we aren't tying these goals through the budget process, and so it'd be in some ways kind of good for the staff to have the opportunity to say, what's the board wants to do, what's the community wants to do via the board, and, and so when they build their budgets, they know they're making sure that they have staff capacity to, I mean, we've had the licensing ordinance on there for eight years, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so they're a long time.
What's stopping that, and so, you know, it's, it's just capacity, and so, you know, we could have a conversation about priorities, and if it stays a low priority on, on the list, then maybe it just stays there, but if it truly is a high priority, we continue to fail to meet it to figure out how do we, what's it take to get that, so having a three-year strategic work plan of the board will help the department see a little further down the road, it might take a couple of years to get something funded and built out and to see if it works, so if you go just year to year, it's, it's hard to see too far forward, so, yeah.
I was really excited when you said that you wanted to have a three-year plan, I mean, that is so much more forward-looking and it, you're able to build more things into the budget with doing it that way, rather than just like, this, this is like, we're living paycheck to paycheck.
Hmm.
No, we need to do better than that.
Seattle, a little bit further, so, yeah.
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 I guess you should have been here when I first got on, because we didn't have anything.
Yeah. Yeah. It's nice to know. It's come a long ways, yeah, yeah, absolutely, so this stuff keeps evolving, get better and better.
Stuck in a stagnant pool of algae.
No doubt. Yeah.
They were, girl.
Yeah.
They're just saying thing over and over.
And floating around, not getting anything done.
Not getting anything done.
Oh, that's a great analogy, Joe.
So how do you feel now?
A lot better, because we actually have capital reserve program, we have goals and public works committees, we've got different committees that address a lot of different things over the years.
Yeah. So you go from, you know, a situation when you started, you know, you're, you're putting out immediate fires, and then to stretch it out, looking at a year work plan was a big step. So, so now we, it, the town's gone as long as it has comfortably with, with having that in place, and, and say with Andy looking at it out three years, now you can expand on that, so, but without that without that long-term, having that first year, you know, that one-year plan, we wouldn't be where we are now, so.
Do we have anything here in this, I'm sorry, I did look through it all, I did, but, um, do we have anything in there for parking?
The traffic and parking ordinance, I believe, I believe is listed.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna nominate you for the parking lot czar.
Fine.
I just, I put it in the, the appointments, so.
He might.
Um, all right, let's move along here, um, charter members, Andy?
Yeah, I don't have, not proposing any right now, acknowledging that we do need to do.
Needs to be looked over and.
Minor ones, the, the, probably the most immediate one. One of the, one of the more immediate ones is the school.
Yeah, right, yeah, you get some language updates.
Go reference a very.
I know. Like four school districts ago.
Um, but they're, uh.
Yeah.
Trying to remember, I think there's some, I mean, that in of itself, but some of the changes that they are proposing going through would also mean that we need to
Mm-hmm.
do it now, but also probably do it again, and there's some other things in there that probably should be looked at, the, the last two pages of your packet, um, was something that was published a few years, a couple of years, uh, last year, um, and there's a minor distinction between revision and amendment, and it's not clearly defined, um, not asking Amanda to weigh in on it, but she is here, uh, and so we're just making sure that we're, we're on the right side, we can amend through the board, and if you revise your charter, that needs to go through a charter commission, and that process is gonna be a lot longer.
Yep.
Um, than being able to treat it like a kind of an ordinance update through the board, um, in public hearing, and, um, so just making sure that we, we don't be too far away, whatever we're looking at stays in the amendment lane and not.
Not the revision lane, okay.
It is, um, yeah, so this is, we're early steps of this, so I, you know, you're looking at, um, uh, the big stuff with language revisions and things like that, and descriptions, obviously with the school, and that, that's a big one, needs to be updated.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that, uh, and then, um, I suppose, yeah, as far as statutes and legal side of it, we need to make sure that we're up to date on everything, so at some point, we need the, um, you, you said Amanda legal has not looked through this yet, but at some point, yeah, it should, we should have, uh, um, counsel look through it and make sure we don't have any glaring uh, glaring legal issues that we've, because I mean, when, when was this, when was the, do you remember when the charter was?
I keep throwing Josh into this over here.
Well, we went, we had to change it a while, the, the town manager former government.
Right.
At one point.
That's probably the last big revision.
It was one of the major.
Yeah, that would have been.
One of the last major ones. So we had two other ones where we just changed what the, the bid.
You know, it used to be like fifteen thousand or something.
Yeah, that's right, we changed the bid.
I mean, we've cleaned things up over the years, but the, the, the big document was basically the original one.
Yeah, so it's two thousand and five.
That's when it, okay.
The effective, effective date.
Yeah, and then, yeah, because the last one I remember, we, we did the bid, um, up the bid amount, that's how.
It's the last revision that we really did.
Yeah, yeah.
It's been.
Yeah, the, yeah, exactly, so, so, yeah, so it needs to be looked over, and we need to, um, yeah, make sure everything is up to date on as far as meets state statutes and federal statutes and whatnot, so.
First, that's.
Okay. All right. I get a few things to do, yeah, not too bad. It's tough, oh. Um, all right, um, well, is there any, any, anything else coming in, I see anybody comments there, so.
Anything from Michael?
Uh, I'm just hanging out, yeah, I think so, yeah.
Paying term bill.
Yeah, thank you, we appreciate it. Oh, um, if there, yeah, if there's no more regular business, we do have, um, an executive session, um, that we've got to go into shortly. Um, so I'll just, uh, give it board a moment, does anybody have anything they wanna add or anything comments this evening?
I, I guess the only thing I'm seeing was when I drive through downtown is the sandwich board issue.
Mm-hmm.
Needs to be, everything needs to be handicapped accessible, you know, people can't get down the sidewalk, you know, because there's a sandwich board, or there's two, one here, and there's one on the other side, and there's this much space. You know, at some point, and I've said this for many years, you know, if you can't do it, then we're gonna take, we'll have to take your sign to make it handicapped accessible, you know, you lose your, forfeit your sign.
Well, maybe we should do that anyway.
I can't remember the.
We have a sign ordinance.
We just assign orders.
Double check, we can double check with George on, on how those may or may not be in compliance and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't have a problem with them being out, the problem I have is if if they're in the way, and, you know, we have people that.
And our sidewalks aren't that big.
No, so if we can make sure that everybody has a right to walk down there without being.
Yeah, without obstruction or, or, yeah, so, yeah. Something that's, and all this, even, even if they are within, um, within the ordinance, you know, it's one of those things you just be cognizant of, and, you know, just be aware that if you're putting one out and it's hmm, certain size or in a certain spot, just, yeah, just be careful, you know, everybody's gonna get through there, so, good point.